See, this is what it looks like.
Oh my gosh!
It doesn't do anything?
No!
What, he thought it was an iOS issue?
Okay. Wow.
Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM, so I'm going to call this February 28th, Sejueli City Council Meeting to Order. Before we stand up, I want to acknowledge though a few people. We have in the room some dignitaries. We have Commissioner Wiesen and also Commissioner Browning. Welcome, welcome. We also have our speakers tonight, which is Robert Knoll, who will be talking about PSE and everything that goes along with that, and then also Josh Polino, who's going to talk about the levy that's coming up. So, I also want to acknowledge both Kat and Kai, who are from the YMCA. Thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for the good work that you're doing in our city. All right. Okay, did I miss anybody? All right, let's stand for the Pledge Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll do a quick roll call. So, Councilwoman Lloyd.
Here.
Councilwoman Kestie.
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilwoman Allen, I saw where he was online. Or Henderson, Councilwoman Henderson. Yep, I see him there, I think. Councilwoman Cock.
Present.
Councilwoman Burns.
Present.
Councilwoman Lavaca.
Present.
And I am here, I think. So, let's move into approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Lavaca, seconded by Councilwoman Cock. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. And, motion for approval for the consent agenda items 1 through 11. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Uh, Madam Mayor.
Yes? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to pull, uh, items 7, 8, and 9 for discussion, if I could.
Okay, um, we can pull those. I don't know, depending upon what your questions are, this may be executive session. I don't know. Can we ask specifically what you're looking at?
So, they're on the consent agenda for a, uh, all of them are within the bargaining unit.
I think you froze up. Councilwoman Henderson, I think you have froze up.
What? Why these weren't, um, on the initial, uh, contract?
Okay, so we only got part of what you were saying because you froze up?
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, on, uh, item 7, 8, and 9, I'm just inquiring as to why those weren't included on the, uh, on the contract that we had just voted to ratify.
Okay, do you want to answer that?
I can answer that now, if it's helpful. I mean, it's a little bit slightly different for each one. The wastewater collection specialist 2 position was an omission. It was in our initial classification and compensation study, and then got dropped. It's not been a position that's been occupied, and it is what we want to have, um, as a position. It's a placeholder position. So it was studied, it just never made it into the grid. It was pointed out to me and the union, and we talked about it, and are proposing that we put it into the grid. So that's why that one's there. It's just the timing of when it came up. The second one, number 8, on regarding lead and vehicle technical mechanic positions, that's a result, that was in progress at the end of negotiations, but not a conversation that we concluded with the union until negotiations were over. And then the third one, the social media specialty pay, we do have that in the contract. The request is to have a, uh, one additional person. The contract basically says one person could be designated for that, and we'd like to have more than that. We'd like to have two. And that was something we didn't quite get into the contract at the very end, but it's a request.
Does, does that answer your question, Councilman Henderson?
Yes.
All right, so are you okay with us moving forward to approve?
Yeah.
All right, so.
Yeah, we're good.
We had a motion by Councilwoman Burns. Do we have a second? If we did, I didn't hear it, I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
Okay. So for the consent agenda, we have a motion by Councilwoman Burns, seconded by Councilwoman Cock, to approve consent agenda items 1 through 11. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, great. Motion carries. All right, moving on to presentations. So tonight, we have our annual presentation by Robert Knoll. Yep, he's going to come forward and talk to us about, uh, what's going on with PSE, the projects and all that that's happening. Councilman Henderson, your hand is still up. Do you have another question?
I do not.
Okay.
Do I just press it again?
Yeah.
There we go.
All right, thank you.
It's off.
So, I hope it's not presumptuous to move this a little bit, because I think my slides will be up there.
No, perfect.
I hope that's okay. Well, good, uh, good evening, council. I'm Robert Knoll with Puget Sound Energy, and I work in our Government Affairs Department. And I would love for this to be an annual presentation. I think it's actually been quite a while since I've been before you. Um, the impetus for this was actually the outage that we had in January, and I know some of you were impacted by that, when we had, uh, a significant, um, damage to some downtown infrastructure that caused an outage that went over 24 hours. I think, for some, it was actually even longer than that. So, um, really, the purpose of my coming here today is to talk a little bit about our storm, um, preparations, how we restore power during storms, and then to answer any questions that you have. Um, so let's see. And can you guys see, are you able to see that okay? Can we make it? I'm not sure what you're seeing on that side, so. Oh yeah, that's great. So yeah, so we'll cover a couple things. I'm going to go over our storm preparedness, some of our infrastructure, resources available to our customers, and then a little bit about how we restore power, how we go about doing that, and our outage communications. But before I go into that, at PSE, we really like to emphasize safety. Obviously, we're your electric service provider, so that's really important. So, just want to start off with a safety moment, if I can get off to the next slide. Great, and this is about downed power lines. You know, some, um, we've had incidents, some of them have been in the news lately, um, with downed power lines, unfortunately. So always assume, if you see, if you come across a downed power line, you always want to assume that that's energized. Um, you know, it's sometimes hard to tell if you're observing a communications line, or tell, or if it's a power line. So you should always assume if you come across something down, that that's energized. Um, always stay in your car, don't drive over the power lines. Um, and if you must evacuate, you want to jump out with both feet, landing together, and then shuffle away to safety. Um, and obviously immediately call 911. Okay. So, next slide, please. So PSE is, um, the state's oldest and largest utility. We have about 1.2 million electric customers across 6,000 square miles. So that's a lot of storm territory to cover. It's, uh, 26,000 miles of electric lines. To maintain reliability for our customers, we work year-round to, to strengthen our system and to prepare for storms. Kind of like the one we're having right now, actually. As I was driving up here, I was just really hoping that we would be on everywhere. Um, so what that means all season long is that we're trimming back vegetation that can snag lines, we're replacing aging poles to be more resilient against wind and fallen trees, and then we're replacing existing wires with stronger covered conductors. And then we also have targeted reliability projects. So we look at the system performance on a regular basis, and, and direct projects based on, um, based on that performance data. Next slide, please. So our ready, readiness, uh, infrastructure, so what do we have ready for when it looks like today, out your window, and you're seeing that kind of, um, the wind blowing. So, uh, major storms and outages are really an all hands on deck situation for us. We have over 900 employees that have direct storm rolls when we do get into a storm situation. That's almost a third of our total employees in that situation. So during storm events, we deploy, uh, what are called storm bases and emergency coordination centers. The storm bases will manage rapid response assessment and repairs, and then our ECC opens when, essentially when we get to a threshold that's larger than these specialized and local storm bases can manage. So that's a more system, uh, system-wide event, for example, or a threshold of, you know, a lot of customers out at a certain time. So the emergency coordination centers are, provide oversight and direction for our coordinated response effort, and their primary functions are, are situational awareness and operating procedures, logistical support and communication, um, and coordination between different departments. So, and just as a aside, when we open an ECC, that's pretty, pretty much when you're going to hear from me, from my, either from email or, or phone. Next slide, please. Oh, I think I have. Oh, they're just stuck together. Good, I thought I missed a slide. So, um, just going briefly into how we restore power, we, um, we really generally restore customers and facilities in the way that the greatest number of customers are restored back in the least amount of time. So, and that may be obvious to some, but, um, you know, in a city, for example, in municipalities, if we have a larger outage, um, we're going to go to that first because we can turn a lot of customers on right away. And, you know, areas where we're serving, you know, a few houses, or, um, you know, less customers at the end of a distribution line, for example, you know, those aren't prioritized over, say, a substation that's powering 2,500 homes, um, for example. So, there's kind of two, um, two levels of prioritization that I'll talk about really quick. First is the systems prioritization. So transmission, um, that is what, you know, the largest level of our, of our, our system, we're going to always be looking at that first, because that is how we can restore, um, the most customers. Um, they're also how we get power to critical community assets, dams, you know, to customers at, excuse me, the county, city, you know, neighborhood level. Um, the next kind of level of systems prioritization is going to be substations, because these can affect thousands of customers at a time. Um, and then finally, down to that distribution level system. So these are the wires and conductors that you're seeing, um, in your, uh, in your neighborhoods. Within that context of the systems, we, um, also consider customer-level prioritization. So obviously, that, that's, um, within that kind of context, um, uh, we have emergency response coordination that maintain lists of critical infrastructure that we look at to restore first. Um, hospitals, regional airports, water, wastewater treatment, those kind of things are all in our, on our radar as critical infrastructure to prioritize first. Um, and then finally, facilities which have folks that can't easily relocate, or have vulnerable populations, you know, nursing homes, assisted living facilities, also on our radar for that kind of prioritization. Next slide, please.
So, so, quick question regarding the power outage that we had here. So, um, you actually responded much quicker than we had anticipated, but did that have to do with the fact that there were a couple transformers that had gone down?
Yeah, I think it, so for that specific event, it was the scale of the damage that had caused, that had, that had happened, and also the fact that even though this was a, a territory-wide windstorm, we were seeing quite a bit of outages throughout our territory. For some reason, the rest of Skagit County on that particular day, it was pretty, pretty mild in the way that it hit. I mean, we had a significant amount of outages, but, um, but the number here and the extent of the damage meant that we, we were on that very quickly. Then, of course, it took quite a while to fix because of the extent of the damage.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, so, couple things, just in the event of a storm that I, I like to emphasize, you know, we have, um, three types of teams that you're going to see out there. Um, we have first response, we have assessment, and we have service. Um, so you can see, um, the different, the different trucks they have there, and, you know, restoration work is assigned after the damage assessment has been performed. So you can see different kinds of crews coming and going. So I always like to, um, to emphasize that, because you might see a crew that's there to restore the right of way, but they're not going to do the work on the pole yet, that kind of thing. So don't assume because one truck is leaving that they're, they're done, even though the power hasn't been restored yet. Next slide, please. So another thing I really like to emphasize, and I didn't know this before, coming to PSE and working at a utility, but we don't, we don't know, um, we don't always know where these outages are on the system, on the distribution level, on an individual level. So it's really important to, uh, to report your outage, either with the number or with the PSE app. That really helps us maintain situational awareness of, of where these outages are, and then prioritizing them for, um, restoration. Um, you know, our substa, on the substation and transmission line, we do have, you know, real-time, um, visibility on that. I don't want to sound like, um, we don't have visibility on the whole system, but that's just something that a lot of people don't realize about the distribution level, the lower level, the neighborhood level of power there. Um, and then, again, if you, um, still don't have power after a couple hours, one reason I'm here, I, so you have a contact to, I say bug us, but, but truly, please do get in contact if you don't have, uh, power after several hours, and then also re-reporting in the app, if they, if you haven't come back on. Next slide, please. This just shows a little bit about, I'm not sure how clear that is, just our, you've probably all used the outage map, and, um, but just want to emphasize how important that is, um, you know, in our, um, our, our infrastructure for you, you to be able to use. Uh, one thing we run into a lot is our ETR, is estimated restoration times. Um, in general, we look at the, uh, lines that feed critical facilities and large volumes of customers first, um, and once we have the idea of damages, we, we assign resources. So once that resource gets there, that is when they can give that estimate of time needed to restore. So for most of these outages, you'll see an ETR once that damage has actually been assessed in person. Next slide, please. So there's a lot of customer safety tips available on our website, and, um, one of the most important is the emergency kit. Uh, this is another one I'm guilty of. I think I've given a lot of presentations to councils or community groups and said, "You should have an emergency kit," and I didn't have one myself. I do have one now, but it is really a great thing, um, to have. Make sure to include enough supplies to last at least three days for you, your family, and your pets. Always think of the pets. Um, and it should include things like a first aid kit, water, a stove, food, cash, matches, flashlight, batteries, you get the picture. But the other thing we always like to emphasize is to have a backup charger for your phone, so you can stay connected. It's always good to have an emergency kit just for the car as well. Next slide. Great. Um, so all of the resources I went over today are on pse.com/storm. Um, we have videos for how to prepare for outages. Um, we have instructor-led classes. Um, we offer for jurisdictions like fire and police. And then we have really detailed info on our system restoration plans. All of what I kind of breezed over, we have spelled out and really, uh, in detail, um, and available to the public, if, if anyone is interested in that. Okay, and that is, next slide, please. There we go. Okay, now, ready for questions if you have them. And I just want to say again, thank you for, uh, inviting me here. I know council schedules are packed, and so I hope I got through that in, in good time, but just glad to be here.
Robert? Yeah?
Thank you for your presentation, and I was just curious. I'm sure you could go back and look at the history of your repairs and areas and say, "We keep doing this one every year." Is there any plan to start burying infrastructure?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. We, you know, most of the resilience that we build into the system is not undergrounding, in part because undergrounding is, uh, it's, it's very cost prohibitive. Um, we do work with some jurisdictions where they are able to fund part of that undergrounding, um, in special cases, but for the most part, even with those, uh, repairs, you know, to a system that, you know, we feel like, "Well, the tree keeps going into the line," you know, "Why are we, why do we keep doing that?" Even with that kind of infrastructure, um, the, the main thing with undergrounding is just different communities not having the density to support that level of, of infrastructure. So in, in this region, for example, you really see that primarily just in the most dense kind of downtown or business areas, or special cases where it's required. You know, for example, if we're, um, if we have conductors where there's an airport approach, or, or something like that.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Cock, you have?
Yes, I was just curious, after the disaster in, on Maui, in which there was concern raised about the electricity not being turned off, and we're getting increasingly bad droughts, are you guys making preparations? We, the reason I ask is, our fire department does a great job, but we do have major gas pipelines running through this town, too.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that's a, it's a very timely question, because even, um, as, as I'm sure you're aware, even on the west side of the state, we're looking at, um, the pot, you know, because of, uh, of, you know, changing climate, because of, of drought situations, we're, we're seeing that kind of fire risk even over on the west side of the state. So yes, as a, as a utility, we're, um, we are actively planning, um, for that. We also have, um, we actually have, and I don't, unfortunately, and I'll have to follow up with you on this, but we actually have some public meetings on this very subject, um, and what PSE is planning to do. So I think best thing would be maybe to follow up just in a little bit more detail. Um, the kind of context that that comes up a lot, and is what you mentioned, which is a, is called a public safety power shut-off. And so, that's another piece that comes in, into play when we're talking wildfires, but of course, there's, it's a really difficult, um, it's, it's not an easy thing for utilities and the public to, to answer, even in the case of wildfire threat, because, as I'm sure you know, when, when power goes off, you, there's, there's consequences to that, too, so.
Right.
But yeah, I have some, some materials I could follow up with you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember.
Councilwoman Lavaca?
Thank you. Uh, so, Mr. Knoll, how much power do you think that right now we, we have, do we have enough to suffice growth, or, um, plenty to keep going on and on? Are we pulling it from the reserve of the dams, and so we have a lot, or is it coming from somewhere else?
Yeah, we are really in the midst of a, a transformation, as far as where we source and, and how we generate, and, and what the capacity needs are. Um, and that's really a kind of decade-long or more conversation, and, and planning conversation that we're having, um, as, as a utility and as a state, um, which, that's not kind of a non-answer, but, um, just to be more specific, you know, we prioritize as our number one priority, the reliability of the system. So, um, we, you know, won't compromise on, on being able to deliver the power that's needed in our, in our communities. So no, I, I wouldn't say there's a, a shortage, um, right now, especially at the community level. But again, there's, you know, there's a larger conversation, I would say, happening at state, federal level, um, as far as generation and capacity needs.
Okay, and then right now, where are we pulling that power from?
Um, there's a lot of different sources where we, uh, where we own generation. PSE is the largest owner of, of electric generation in the state. So we own, uh, power plants, um, wind, solar, um, and we actually own those assets all over the state, but then a significant portion of our, um, power need is derived from the open market, so we purchase with, uh, with contracts on the electric market as well.
I, I've seen, and obviously we hear the stories in the summer and the winter of rolling blackouts in crazy areas like California that mismanage their power and their consumption, and, and their agendas. And so, we're not heading that direction by no means, I guess.
Not if I can help it.
Awesome.
But, um, no, it's a larger, again, it's, uh, that, kind of a larger contextual conversation. We, um, in, in Washington State, we are regulated by the UTC. Uh, we're a regulated utility. Um, the, the goals of, of our clean energy transformation, um, and where we want to go as a company are, I think, in, in balance with reliability and affordability, uh, and that's our goal, you know, as a, as a company. But I think that, that's where, for the most part, the policy, um, is as well. That's a little bit of a, more of an editorial comment than I should make, but, uh, no, we're, we're a lot, just to answer it really simply, we're a lot different than California and Texas in the way that we're regulated.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Diamond?
My question kind of just went along with that, because we've all in this room and constituents have been receiving the automated phone calls asking us to conserve energy. And so with the push from the state and developers wanting higher density housing, um, R15s and mixed commercial use, that puts a lot more stress onto the grid. If we're already receiving those phone calls asking us to reduce our consumption, how are we expected to, uh, allow for that increase and continue to service our community as it, as it should be?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. We forecast our, uh, energy needs on both the short and long term, so we will be looking at that, you know, in real time as we balance the grid, um, on regular week intervals, and then also in public plans that we file with the state for, for a longer period, which is called our Integrated Resource Plan. Um, the event in, I want to say January, that I think you're referring to, where we had that cold snap, was a pretty extraordinary, uh, day for the region, both temperature-wise, and then for us as a utility, because we had a, um, a system outage in our natural gas storage. So, that kind of thing is, you know, extraordinary, but again, didn't result in us having to, um, you know, do any kind of rolling blackouts, or...
Okay, because I, I personally received a phone call on Monday, from the automated service, asking me to...
This Monday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
To conserve consumption. And so I was just wondering, without anything going on, um, in that area realm that I was aware of, and no specific cold snaps, um, receiving those calls, and... of, and no specific cold snaps, receiving those calls and, and, you know, looking at the development and growth of our city, how that, how that impacts the infrastructure provided to our...
Yeah, I think, I think that's, I'm a little flat-footed because I'm not sure. I, I was out of the office on Monday, so I'm not, I'm just not familiar with what happened on Monday, but would love to follow up with you on that. Yeah.
Councilman Lloyd, did you, I see your lights on. Did you have a question?
No, but as long as I got it. I've lived here for a long time, and the power outages we've had here, at least where I live, have been miniscule, and it's just amazing how good you guys do. So I appreciate, when it goes out an hour or two later, it's back, so...
Yeah, well, thank you, and just, you know, always, and I would love to have had more pictures of our crews that are out there, but, you know, I think one of the things to remember, too, that folks always remember is the wind will still be howling and the rain coming down, and we have, have those crews that are out doing that work, so let's think to them.
I, I actually have a question regarding nuclear power. Is that something that's being considered by PSE?
The, you know, I think there's, there's such a steep hill to climb as far as energy is concerned and a clean energy transition that our, you know, our philosophy is really an all of, all of the above there. PSE has made investments in, now that I'm standing here, I can't remember the name of this company, but in, in a company specifically that's doing small modular nuclear reactors. So yes, we are, we are investing in that technology as a potential future. But, you know, if I, if I had to take that hat off for a second, which I shouldn't do, but I think that that's, you know, likely to be a piece of, of it in the future.
Okay. And then one last question, because I know that we do this for, for cable redundancy. So is there, does that happen with PSE, or is there any thought of creating that kind of tool, being able to have a power that's redundant?
Yeah, I think, so I'm, I'm not sure I quite understand. I think redundancy, I mean, we have to, as we add intermittent resources to our grid, wind and solar, which we, as you know, can't control with a switch like nuclear or natural gas, for example, we have to balance those assets with, with baseload energy. And so redundancy is really, you know, critical. The other way we can add that as we go forward is with battery storage, with distributed, you know, distributed systems that the customer can have. So, you know, again, I'll, kind of an all-of-the-above approach.
Well, thank you, Robert. Thank you for coming.
You're so welcome. Good to see you all.
Right. Then our second presenter is Josh Polonio. Am I saying your last name correctly? I think I said it incorrect the first time. So yeah, you're going to be talking about the EMS levy that we're going to be voting on here shortly.
Correct, yes. Josh Polonio, Director, Skagit County Emergency Medical Services. So I am fortunate, I've been with the county for the last five and a half years, and so I've been here for the entirety of the current EMS levy cycle. And I've been fortunate to work with all of our county public safety partners, including City of Cedar Wully Police and Fire Departments.
Madam Mayor, if I may, if you speak into the microphone when it's recorded, then they can hear you, but we can hear you fine now, but when we follow up on the video, we won't be able to hear you.
Perfect, thank you for that. So yeah, I'm here to talk about the EMS levy renewal, and you can go to the next slide, please. So first of all, Skagit County EMS is a Department of Skagit County Government, and we are responsible for coordinating and overseeing the countywide EMS system. So we do that, we have a system that consists of both basic life support, which is EMTs, and advanced life support, which is paramedics. And we contract with cities, towns, fire departments, and other agencies that provide that service. In 2023, our partner agencies responded to just over 18,000 calls for service, and about half of those resulted in an ambulance transport to the hospital, either by ground or by air. Next slide. Call volumes over the past four years have increased a little over 25%. And we basically are, our countywide, I'll show you a map here in a second, but our countywide system covers everything between the Waukem County line, the Snohomish County line, and then from the water all the way up to New Haleum in the east part of the county. Next slide. So this is kind of a hard to, to see the details, but I don't think you really need to to understand the context. But when we say countywide coordinated system, this map shows our primary ALS transport provider agencies. And so you'll see the, the green section to the left is the Anacortes Fire Department. The yellow section down towards the bottom is Mount Vernon Fire Department. The upper kind of tealish-blue color is Burlington Fire Department. The purple in the middle is the Cedar Wully Fire Department, and then the far right kind of reddish-pink is a nonprofit that we have upriver that's called Aeroskagit. So although we do designate primary and secondary areas, which is required by Department of Health for licensing purposes, we use a technology that is GPS-based, that dispatches the closest, most appropriate resource for the call regardless of jurisdiction. So if you see a Cedar Wully fire unit heading into Clear Lake, for example, or if you see a Burlington fire unit heading into the city, it's just because they're all working under that coordinated system that sends the closest resource based on who's available and who's closest to the call. Next slide. Supporting those ALS provider agencies, we have just over 20 other agencies that are non-transport agencies, that are primarily fire districts and town fire departments. And so you can see those reflected here on this map. And we call those first response agencies, because while they don't transport, they do respond to the incident and help provide stabilization and treatment, and then assistance to the transport unit when it arrives. Next slide. So in Skagit County, EMS is funded through a voter-approved property tax levy, and it is capped by law at 50 cents per $1,000 of assessed property value. Voters last renewed our current EMS levy at a rate of 44 cents per thousand, and that was in 2018. Since then, as of last week, the levy rate has dropped to 30 cents based on rising assessed value. So levy rates obviously fall as property values rise and limit us to roughly the same amount of income or revenue plus a 1% increase allowed by law. Next slide. So I wanted to kind of talk a little bit about how the levy funds are distributed. So you can see in this slide, we have kind of several areas. The first one is a contribution to the Skagit 911 user fee system. So if you look at Skagit 911's budget, user agencies are assigned user agency fees based on a formula that's 50% assessed valuation and 50% call volume. So of that formula, we take 85% out, and that's paid for by the EMS levy. And that's because if you combine all of the fire and EMS calls that happen in the county, approximately 85% of those are EMS in nature. So we pay the 85% of, of the user fees on behalf of the agencies that provide EMS. On the administration side, that's what funds my office and my staff. I have a training specialist, I have a data specialist that manages state-required reporting, and then I have an admin coordinator. And then we also have two EMS physicians that provide oversight, and that's required by law. So we have two physicians that are covered in that administration section as well. And then we have some other technology-related things that we pay for out of that. So the GPS technology that I mentioned, there's some GIS work that has to be done maintaining roads and addresses and centerlines and that sort of thing. The technology we use actually also looks at speed limits to help determine who's the closest resource to get to a call. And so those are all things that have to be maintained by the GS, GIS and IS departments, and so that comes out of administration. On the training side, I mentioned a coordinated system. Although we have different service providers, everybody falls under the same ongoing education program, which again is required by law. We also provide access to an initial EMT training program through Skagit Valley College. So for all of our agencies, including our volunteer agencies, we provide an avenue for them to get that EMT training to, to reduce that burden on the agencies and the individuals. And that includes also support with certification, recertification, tracking of continuing education hours, and everything that goes with that. On the BLS agency side, 4% is kind of a misleading number, and I only say that because that's the, those are the, the money that goes directly to the BLS agencies by way of disposable medical supplies, oxygen, equipment, that sort of thing. But the BLS agencies obviously take part and get benefit out of the training administration portions as well. And then the, the largest section is the ALS agencies, which, as I mentioned, is Aeroskagit in the east part of the county, City of Anacortes, City of Burlington, City of Mount Vernon, and City of Cedar Wully. Next slide. So we currently have a six-year levy, and it expires at the end of 2024. Next slide. So continued funding of the EMS levy will continue to provide funding for paramedics and emergency medical technicians. We have approximately 470 providers in the county, which includes paid and volunteer, and that's EMTs. And then we have about 70 paramedics across the county. It will continue to fund the medical education and training that I talked about, fuel, equipment, ambulance maintenance and replacement, and then disposable, disposable medical supplies as well as pharmaceuticals. Next slide. So we're going to be asking voters to continue, it'll be a continuation, a six-year levy renewal at a rate of 47 cents per thousand. And again, I mentioned before, the, the maximum, statutory maximum was 50 cents per thousand. We were last approved at 44, but again, we're, we've dropped down to 30 cents, so we're going to be asking for 47 cents, which represents a 17 cent per thousand levy rate increase from where we are today. And you can see for a median assessed value home of $555,000, that's $94.35 per year, or $7.87 per month for 24/7 EMS response. Next slide. So the Board of County Commissioners has signed a resolution last month authorizing the placement of the EMS levy renewal on the April 23, 2024 special election. So that's where it will appear. Next slide. And that is all I have. My contact information is there, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So any questions for Josh?
I got one.
Yes, go ahead.
How many total ambulances are you working with, and what's their life expectancy?
Are you talking about the, the vehicles themselves?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I couldn't give you a number on the vehicles themselves, because again, I don't, I don't own the vehicles, they're owned by the individual entities. I can tell you on a day-to-day basis, when we're fully staffed, we typically have about 10 ambulances on the road, staffed in the county. But in terms of how many physical vehicles we have, I don't have that information, because again, I, I don't own them. We provide the, the funding, and then each entity manages the, their own fleet. And so Chief Wagner could probably give you some information about lifespan and how quickly vehicles turn over and that sort of thing. But I can say that generally, we're seeing two, two impacts, right? The, the higher the call volume, the higher the maintenance costs, the wear and tear, the less life we're going to get out of vehicles. And then obviously, we've seen delays with manufacturing of vehicles and equipment that has caused a long delay, so it makes it even more difficult to, to get those vehicles in a timely manner to keep them in, in working order.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming down, Josh. I just had a question. We had 18,000 calls last year, and then how many of those are repeat callers or callers that might be, and we kind of went through this with our chief, on calls that we had, if we can prioritize those on a, on a one to five? And this one, five is, I need to get this person to the hospital, one is they're calling because their light switch is off again.
Sure.
Are we seeing a large call volume of that? I know we were in Cedar Wully. It was like, I think 40 people were over 40% of our call volume or something like that.
Yeah, I don't have that exact number in front of me, but I'll tell you that we're, we're looking into that. One of the challenges, so we use a, a classification system at Skagit 911, which is, which is part of where those user fees go, to classify calls by, by category, right? And so the, the one through five you just talked about, we have a very similar system, but it's omega through echo, right? So your omega is kind of your low acuity, probably doesn't need an ambulance. You have your alpha, which is your non-emergency BLS typically. You have your bravo, which is your emergent, but still probably BLS. And then you have your charlie delta echo, which is your higher level. We need all the resources we can quickly. And so we do have a way of, at least if we have, if we get into a situation where we have system capacity issues, we have a lot of calls going on, we have a way to allow the crews to prioritize and reassign if necessary, because we want to get somebody to the echo level CPR quicker than the, you know, omega level to pain, right? And so they're able to make that decision on the fly. The challenge with monitoring, you know, repeat customers, if you will, is that we have, because we have so many different entities, we are fortunate that we have, and this is why we have a data specialist in my office, is that we can look at an umbrella system and be able to see that this person was transported by Mount Vernon yesterday, and they were seen by Cedar Wully today, and, you know, maybe tomorrow they're going to be in Anacortes. We can usually see that, but there's a lot of factors that go into it, right? Because that, that population that we tend to see on a repeated basis, a lot of them are unhoused, and a lot of them don't necessarily provide the, the information that we need at the time of the call. So if we don't have the right name, date of birth, we can't necessarily link them together. And that happens periodically, where we get requests from, you know, the hospital or coroner's office or whoever, and, and trying to link these people together and figure out, is this the same person or not? Just because we don't always have those details. But we are looking at that. We do, I will tell you, we have a, we have a number of people that we see in the county in multiple jurisdictions on a regular basis.
Thank you. We, we actually discussed even getting somebody in as more of a counselor base for elderly people, people that are repeated calling because they're lonely. We saw a 25% increase in calls in 2023 over a five-year span, but we haven't seen a 25% increase in populace. Is there, is there something correlating the two together?
I would be speculating if I said that there was. There, there may be. I think, I think what we saw through, you know, kind of the COVID pandemic and some of the delayed access to healthcare, and I think we're still seeing some of those impacts of, you know, people who weren't able to get scheduled procedures done, people who just dropped out of the healthcare system altogether because they're, you know, whether it's fear or access or availability or whatever. And so we see quite a few people that just don't have good access to regular healthcare, and so their access to healthcare is the 911 system. And unfortunately, we've done such a great job over the last, you know, however many years educating people that if you don't know what to do and you have a problem, you push these three buttons and someone will show up and help you. And, and we're, we're good at that, we're very good at that. But unfortunately, that creates challenges as well. We've also seen issues over the past several years with overcrowding in the hospitals, and that has an impact as well. When hospitals have, we call it a throughput issue, where they can't get people in and out in a, in a, in a regular basis, or we have ambulances that are waiting at the hospital for a bed to put somebody in. And so that obviously causes downstream impacts as well. So I couldn't tell you exactly what that is. I would just say that we see a lot of people that, you know, probably don't need to go via 911, via ambulance, but a lot of times they don't have any other way to access healthcare or whatever resource it is that they might need at the time.
One more question. Yeah, it is, it is a, definitely a burden on the taxpayer if there's a huge throughput of people who are repetitive callers. It's at 30 cents right now because property value has gone up, so therefore the rate has, has come down a bit. And so we still see high property values, we still see higher property tax on, on the people that we have around. But from 30 to 47s, over a 50% increase, and that's for the services that are going to be provided over the next six years versus the services that were provided the previous six years. For 50% increase, what does that entail? Is that part of the inflation? Is that, I mean, for 50%?
Yeah, so there's a lot of things that go into it. I'm sure you guys are probably familiar with, you know, the increased cost of employees and benefits and that sort of thing. But there's also been a lot of increases, just, mostly it's inflation, but I think some of it is just supply and demand. And, you know, we look at medical equipment, supplies, pharmaceuticals that are already expensive, and we've seen some pretty significant increases. I think the Mount Vernon Fire Department reported that their annual expenses just for disposable medical supplies went up like $50,000 last year. Medications are, are challenging as well because they have a shelf life, but there are certain things that we're required to have, and they have to be maintained in a certain temperature and a certain condition. And so we have to buy them, whether we want to or whether we know we're going to use them or not, right? And so there's a, there's a cost that goes with that. But I think the other piece of it is just really being prepared for, you know, continued call volume growth and making sure that we have the adequate funding to continue to add resources and be able to meet the demand as it comes in the future.
Yeah, we do see, you know, we're, we're told inflation's coming down, or it's, it's not as bad, it's maybe 8%, 10%. But then we see requests for 50% increases because of inflation being a number one cost. So kind of gives it just a little bit of clue on that. I thank you very much for your time, Josh.
Yes, Councilman Cox?
We recently, at least I saw in Skagit Valley, Harold had a large fentanyl seizure, so good work by law enforcement. Are you seeing more calls on fentanyl? I'm just curious what's happening countywide.
Yeah, we are. In fact, we, we co-authored a press release with the Skagit County Drug Enforcement Unit a couple weeks ago. I apologize, I was on vacation last week, so I don't, I'm not sure what the numbers are today. But prior to me leaving for vacation, I know we had, I want to say 18 or 20 incidents that were directly related, directly attributable to fentanyl. Three of them were fatalities. I think there was maybe two or three refusals, and the rest of them were transported to the hospital. the hospital. So, we are fortunate in Skagit County that our public health department, because opioid overdoses are a public health reportable condition by ordinance, they do a pretty good job of tracking that information. We're working on some additional ways that we can do that. I actually have a meeting next week to talk about linking some of the information that comes into our EMS patient care reporting system with a system that law enforcement, public health, and the hospitals can access, that will give us a little bit more real-time data when there's a problem and help, you know, geographically if there's something we can do. Right now, we do heat mapping. We look at those incidents. We try to narrow down, you know, where stuff is coming from and where it's being affected and that sort of thing to work with law enforcement. But we definitely are seeing that increase, and we are tracking it all the way from, you know, the 911 call where we come out and we give Narcan, to someone's transport to the hospital, or they show up at the hospital on their own. All of those get reported to Skagit County Public Health, and they track all of that.
I was shocked in the newspaper story. It said the amount seized would have, could have killed 500,000 people. That's pretty shocking.
Yep.
Thank you.
Statistics that you just gave, so, over what period was that?
That was over a two-week period.
A two-week period, thank you. Okay. Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, Josh, thank you for your presentation. It was very informative. Getting back to the actual, the actual levy, one of the questions I had was, what happens if it doesn't pass, and what is the county's recourse to put that back onto the ballot? Because from what I understand, if it doesn't pass, we lose ambulances and we lose EMS services. What if the ask of 47 cents, with that over 50% increase, is just too high? What do we do then?
Yeah, so that's a good question. And essentially, what it boils down to is, you know, the county contracts with the entities who provide the service. So, it's hard for me to tell you exactly what would happen, other than if we don't have the funding to pay those providers to provide that service, there would be a change in service level. I can't tell you exactly what that would look like. I think it's sort of dependent on what, what amount of money is available. We do have the ability, obviously, if the levy doesn't pass in April, to run it again in one of the two additional elections this year. So, that would probably be our next course of action. But it's hard for me to tell you exactly what would happen, other than there would likely be an impact to services, because we wouldn't have the funding to provide the current contractual services that we have today.
Would there be an adjustment on what we're asking of the taxpayers in the levy if it doesn't pass the first time? Or is that just speculation?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would assume we would have to have that conversation, yeah. And I think kind of the other component that goes into, when we talk about funding of the EMS system, is, you know, the levy is really just one component of how services are funded. The other piece of it is the revenue that's generated through patient transports. And so, when we look at, you know, patient transports, and we look at what, what does reimbursement look like from, you know, commercial insurance versus Medicare, Medicaid, that sort of thing, that also has an impact on the overall system. And so, I can tell you that in generating the, kind of the draft budget to get us where we are today with the request at 47 cents, that's one of the things that we looked at, was what do we think that reimbursement rates are going to do in the future? And how do we help plan to make sure that we have the funding to sustain the system in the event that that funding changes, which we expect it probably will? So, currently, you know, providers that do transport receive about 50% from the EMS levy, and another 50% comes from patient transports. But with changes at the federal and state level, it is likely that the reimbursement piece of those patient transports is going to decrease in the future, and so we want to make sure that we're prepared for that as well.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Burns?
I'm just curious. You said something about the hospitals not always having capacity for patients. Is that an issue where the hospitals are not growing with the population? We're having, you know, can you specify what you're saying?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't work for the hospitals, so I can't, I can't tell you exactly. I can tell you kind of my, my perception of what we've seen. Some of it has to do with, you know, the staffing issues that kind of everybody saw for a period of time, because it's not necessarily that they don't have enough physical beds. It may be that they don't have the staff or equipment to monitor patients in those beds. We work really closely with our hospital partners, and we've also been involved at the regional level, which is the, kind of the five-county region, as well as the Department of Health on strategies on how to, how to address those issues and make sure that they have the capacity. But it's kind of a slippery slope, right? Because they, they want to have the right staffing for the right number of patients. But, you know, the nature of what we do is that it's, there's some seasonality to it. We tend to see higher call volume at certain times of the year, and so the hospital has to try to match that volume and anticipate what they're going to see to make sure that they're staffed appropriately. So, but I can tell you, that's been a challenge nationwide. It's not something that's specific here, but it's, it's definitely something that we're keeping an eye on and having ongoing conversations about, how do we make sure that, you know, that we're not delaying being available for the next call in the community?
Thank you. That's interesting to know that it's staffing that's more of an issue, and I know that sometimes that causes problems with the EMS workers, because they end up waiting for that bed, so, thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Josh.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, moving on to city administration report.
Just a couple of items this evening. The first one is, I'm going to be joining Chief McElroy tomorrow night at a school resource officer meeting hosted by the school district over at Central Skagit Library. That starts at 6:00 PM. And we're also working on that item for discussion for next week's work session, so more to come on that. And then the second item is House Bill 2296 passed both houses of the legislature, and I'm sorry, Mayor, if I stole your thunder on this one. But what that basically means for us is that we have an extension on doing our comp plan for another six months. So, as it stood before, we had to be done by the end of June next year. Now, we have until the end of the calendar year next year. So, we're going to continue on as if it's due at the end of June, but we'll have more time to fall back on, and we were concerned about our ability to hit those deadlines.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Lloyd?
The only thing I got is, we've penciled in a date for our skateboard for August 17th, so, I'll be bothering a lot of you guys to help us out on that thing. So, August 17th, the skateboard challenge for the kids.
All right, thank you. And Councilwoman Kesty?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I had some constituents concerned with North Reed. About 10:30, 11 o'clock at night, it turns into the Fast and Furious, and there's a lot of racing going on, so I just wanted to pass that along.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Good evening. Piggybacking on that, I had community members asking for traffic watch and enforcement on the corner of Seventh and Jameson. I've also had constituents looking for traffic enforcement on speeding on specifically Ferry Street and State Street. Multiple people have reported to me that they actually have seen passing in those residential lanes. So, passing that along. And then I'm continuing to get complaints and frustration from community members for the high-density housing that's going up in the city currently. They're concerned that we, we as a city aren't going to be able to keep up with the pressure that it puts up on, on the infrastructure, and that in turn is going to increase their taxes, as well as the overall health of the community. So, passing that along.
All right, thank you. And Councilman Cox?
No report tonight.
All right, thank you. Councilman Burns?
Just wanted to bring up the Cedar Woolley Lions are having their Take a Swing at Diabetes Golf Tournament on May 11th, and they are looking for players and sponsors. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, we did have the Finance Committee, Paul, I believe you're, or Councilman Coke, you're the chair of that, but I will speak to that just a little bit on, I will be, I have three committees, I do, and then I also do a lot of work overtime and then family needs, so I'm going to step away from that committee, and Councilman Burns is going to step in. A couple of things I left with was the hope to pursue refinancing the council strategic fund going forward, and then also looking into the website to accomplish what we originally set out for in 2022. So, hopefully, those guys are able to be on the, on the item. So, for this weekend, I've had a couple of conversations with people about parks within our community and the excitement for it, but also the utilization of those parks. We have amazing parks and a way to get that information out to the residents, as well as being able to enjoy those as like a circuited product that, that Cedar Woolley has to offer and actually advertises. It's one of our best values, and it's beautiful out there. Also, it's more of a county thing, I'm glad you guys are here, but the units over there at the recreation area, the, I don't know why I'm forgetting, State Hospital Recreation Area? Yeah, well, it's not the Swift, it's the old structures down in the, in the Veterans Park. Those item, those units are pretty dangerous, and even walking dogs over there, I've had people ask if, does Cedar Woolley manage that at all? I've said, no, we don't manage it, but it is a county thing, and, and so, since you guys are here, it is something that is a concern. A lot of tagging throughout there, a lot of rafters that are coming down. Even if a kid's in there tagging something up, a rafter comes down, it can do serious damage to him. So, a lot of concern, even for a dog to be in there. And then also with the, the Olmsted Park going up, people are very excited about that and very excited about the splash pads, so I've heard very great things about that. So, thank you guys very much.
All right, thank you. Would you, would you like to talk to that, to the meeting?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry, I wasn't aware. This is, it was my first meeting in finance and technology, and I thought there were some really good reports, especially on technology and upcoming schedule on the budget. So, I thought it was a very well-done meeting, and we did bring up, Nick brought up the issue of the strategic fund, which I think will be discussed later. Thank you very much.
And Councilman Henderson? Do you have a report? You're muted, Councilman Henderson.
Can you hear me now?
There you are. Thank you.
All right. I just wanted to start off with a big shout-out to the police department. We had a incident last week that I had several constituents reach out to me on about an incident happening within my ward, and the police showed up very quickly, very promptly, and very efficiently. So, we're always, we're always proud of our first responders, and especially the work that the police department is doing. That's all for me.
All right, thank you. And I just have a couple of things, first off, and I want to thank the council for your quick response. So, we do have our council retreat set for Friday, March 15th, from 3:00 to 7:00. Just, I think, basically 10 days away. I'm having a hard time wrapping my mind around the idea we're going to be in March here in just a couple of days. So, anyway, thank you for that, and we'll be sending out more information regarding that as well. Also, you may remember that we had Dave Anderson come before the council. He was talking about sister cities in Georgia, and not in the state of Georgia, but actually in the country of Georgia. And I met with him, and he is headed back that way, and we're hoping that we can put something together, and hopefully, we'll be hearing something about that. So, I want to just give you an update on that. Also, I can't remember if we mentioned this to you or not, or even if Chief Wagner had spoke to it or not, but we did receive from Peace Health, Community Health Council, an approval of $200,000 grant for a joint mobile integrated healthcare program. That's with the high utilizers. We will be doing this with the City of Burlington. We're going to join with them to make that happen, and so we're pretty excited about that. So, anyway, for lack of time, I will continue on so that we can, we have seven items that we need to get through. But before we do that, I want to see if there's anybody who wants to come forth. Thank you very much, Kelly, for public comment. And it looks like we do have, is it Misha?
Mija.
Mija, thank you. And, and what we ask, what we ask is that you give your name and then how you're affiliated with the city at all.
I am here to discuss something. It'll be kind of more relevant in my comment. Okay. So, every 68 seconds, an American is sexually assaulted. Every nine minutes, that victim is a child. Meanwhile, only 25 out of every 1,000 perpetrators will end up in prison. When I was 17, I was raped by a man named Timothy Bartley. I am 33 now, and his actions still affect me. Years later, through a Facebook post by another one of his victims, I was able to find a community who had also been raped by the same man. Most of his victims were under 18, and several were under 16, making them legally children. Of the seven of us who were raped in the Bellingham area alone, only one of these cases is going to trial. I will not speak to their stories, as that is their right to share and not mine. Who knows how many other people he has harmed fleeing states under false aliases? Women and children are both protected classes under international human rights law. The UN considers rape a human rights violation. Sexual exploitation is prohibited under Article 34 of the International Human Rights Conventions. CEDAW asserts that gender-based violence constitutes a form of gender discrimination that each state party to the convention must exercise due diligence to prevent, investigate, or punish of rights by private actors. It is the responsibility of governments to uphold human rights laws and prioritize human rights violations and violent crimes over nonviolent offenses. To quote the notes from my international human rights law professor, "Our access to justice is a protected right. The obligation to remedy human rights violations requires institutions to provide remedy to victims. Our rights under international law are to have the opportunity to participate in criminal proceedings and the prosecution of violent crimes, and an essential remedy to victims of human rights violations." I had to track him down, my own rapist, and get the property owner of the place that he was staying to contact law enforcement, because he had a warrant out for his arrest. I spent hours of unpaid labor, raw in my emotions, fighting to get justice, and he was finally arrested on January 3rd of this year, and I breathed a sigh of relief. Today, he was released from Watcom County Jail on bond. I don't know who released him. It could have been anyone. I am cognizant that the offender's stepparent and family member is an elected official here tonight, and I have made the journey here this evening at great personal cost to ask publicly that Cedar Woolley elected officials, particularly that one, please ensure that my rapist, Timothy Bartley, attends all required court appearances and does not flee the state again to evade justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to come forward for public comment? Okay, hearing none, then I will close public comment, and we will move on to new business. We do not have any unfinished business pending at this point. So, item number one is grant contract, and I believe that is you, Hiller? Are you online, Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Items one and two under new business were previously discussed at the February 7th joint meeting with the Planning Commission. The first item is a contract with the Washington State Department of Commerce for grant funding in the amount of $125,000 for reimbursement of costs involved in the update to the city's comprehensive plan. The grant is for the 2024 and 2025 fiscal years. A motion authorizing the mayor to execute the grant contract is requested. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions for Hiller?
I've got, I've got just a quick one. Is there any matching funds that we have to put in, or is this straight grant?
It is a straight grant. There are no matching funds required. The city does have the option of supplementing the grant amount with city-approved funds, but again, it's not required.
Can I ask one more quick one? When you say supplementing, basically is when we don't have enough money in the grant, then we have to cover the rest of the cost ourself?
If that were to be the case, the, the cost of the comprehensive plan update, the final cost, is, has still not been determined, but we have requested proposals from interested firms based on that grant amount. And so, the assumption going in is that the $125,000 grant will be the, the baseline funding available for that project. Now, I should point out that there are components of the comprehensive plan update that are being funded separately. And in fact, our Public Works Director has more information concerning those sections of the comprehensive plan. There's a sewer plan, for example, and the transportation element, both of which are on your agenda tonight. both of which are on your agenda tonight that are being separately funded. But the, uh, the remainder of the work, uh, the assumption is that the $125,000 grant is the amount that will, uh, be needed for the project.
Councilman Labaka?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. West. Um, I was wondering, I guess it's a little bit for, for Nicole on this end. So with the comprehensive plan, that 125 could go to somebody that develops that? Is that how that works? Or is that something that it goes to, what part, what does the 125,000 go to?
It is, uh, for reimbursement of city costs that are incurred in the, uh, the update work.
Yeah.
So for example, hiring a consultant or consultant team that'll provide assistance to the city with the, uh, update, preparing or, or preparing the, uh, the drafts, providing information to the planning commission and city council, uh, researching data, et cetera. Those costs are to be reimbursed by the grant. Potentially, the grant could also reimburse staffing, uh, costs that are associated with, uh, with the work, but that's still being determined with the Department of Commerce whether that cost is, uh, qualifies for reimbursement. But it's, it's supposed to, um, reimburse all hard costs that are associated with the project.
So, and then we, uh, like Charlie, you presented, we have six extra months. We're not going to count on that, but that's something that's available. So that does give us some time, which is nice. Is that something that seems like the comprehensive plan, based upon what we have now in public works outside of that climate sector, is something that can be done within that range?
I'm anticipating we'll be able to-
You mean within that timeline?
No, within that cost.
Oh, within the cost. Based on the proposals that we've received, uh, it appears that, uh, the consultant portion of this work can be covered by the grant. Uh, there will be some staffing costs, which again, we're trying to determine whether those can be reimbursed as well by the grant funding.
So do we have a consultant for that already?
We're actually in the process of doing that right now. In fact, I don't know, do you want to speak to that at all, Sarah? You were a part of that committee.
So, uh, we're, look, there are two proposals that were submitted and we're currently looking at those and we'll conduct interviews with, with the two firms that are looking to, um, to do our comp plan.
Provide that service.
And provide those services. And, um, the budget is, the budgets provided by both firms do fall within the guidelines and the parameters of this grant funding. There are a few sections that we could opt to, um, not duplicate efforts and there's some things that we can do in-house that would allow us to reduce that and not go over budget.
I, I think it'd be a good opportunity to use a consultant. It'd be great for us as a city, but especially if the money's there. So, appreciate that.
If there's no other comments, is there a motion to authorize me to sign the grant contract? Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion for you to sign the contract for the Washington Department of Commerce Comprehensive Plan Update.
I'll second that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Diamond, seconded by Councilman Labaka, and it's authorizing Mayor Johnson to execute, sign the grant with the Washington Department of Commerce funding for 2025. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, moving on. Then, um, Hiller, we still have you. It's another grant for climate element this time, correct?
It is correct, Mayor. The second item is a contract with the Washington State Department of Commerce for grant funding in the amount of $500,000 for reimbursement of city costs involved in the preparation of a new climate planning element to the city's comprehensive plan. The grant is also for the 2024, 2025 fiscal years and a motion authorizing the mayor to execute the grant contract is requested.
Okay. Any questions regarding this?
Yeah, if I may. Um, so it's, it's basically related to the HB 1181 that was passed, right? And they set aside $30 million at $500,000 a grant that's 60 cities and they're anticipating it would be that much for, for the grant. It may even go over and then we're, we're kind of stuck with that. And we, we kind of discussed that a little bit last time as far as the actual, the standard that, that was placed under the RCW that, that we have to work to, housing and, and economic development and all that. To it, I'd like to go back and revisit like the need for our community to do that and if we would even need to participate with that. I, I would vote against that myself just in protest to them passing this huge burden on us as a city and, um, providing a bunch of stuff in there that doesn't really apply to us necessarily. And there's more than 60 cities in Washington. So I think there's a lot of cities that might be out of that one. Is that correct?
Was that question for me, Councilman? I'm sorry.
If you don't mind.
Uh, well, as you mentioned, House Bill 1181 does place that requirement on, uh, cities and counties throughout Washington and we're part of that.
So if we did, if I may, if we did a comprehensive plan without that part in there, and I think that there's probably going to be other cities that will be, um, either delayed or trying to renegotiate how that works out within their communities. But we still get the comprehensive plan. Uh, is there extensions on that or something like that? We apply for the grant, basically giving them absolution that it should be 500,000 and that we're going to be, uh, accommodating their request. The grant doesn't go through because there are so many cities that need this and now we've just given them the fact that we do agree with them. We do agree with the cost and now we're going to absorb that cost. Is that correct? That might be a question for Nikki.
The grant has gone through. That funding has been allocated, uh, for the city of Cedro Woolley. And what this contract would do is it would, uh, it would implement that funding. So, um, that's all I can tell you about the grant itself being available to the city. It is available. As to the timeline for completing the work, there hasn't been an extension that I'm aware of. The, uh, the timeline is what was provided in the bill. There's potentially, and, and again, uh, I may need to research this a little further, but the very recent, um, legislation that is just passed out of committee that would, uh, extend the deadline for the entire comprehensive plan update to December 31st, 2025, whether that would include the climate element or, or not, I'm not aware that it does, but there's a possibility that that would also provide the extension to December of 2025.
Hiller, um, if I could weigh in, I, I think that it probably does sense this particular bill is actually tied to the periodic update. So if the periodic update timeframe is extended, I think that that goes right along with the other mandatory elements of the comp plan.
Okay. Thank you, Nikki.
Thank you very much, Mr. West. On page 44 or 139 of our packet, 17 of the included, um, proposal from the Washington State of Commerce is a breakdown of those costs. And that's just where I'm looking at 500,000. The property taxes went up as we see levies go up and a lot of that stuff. And I guess if we've already got it, we got it, but it does come from somewhere. It's not free money, even though it's a grant. It is taxpayer. And they have like $65,000 for Audit Current Resilience Plan, $90,000 to explore vulnerabilities and risks, $60,000 towards goals, policies and co-benefits, things like that, that, you know, could be taken advantage of and it could be not the proper use of, of money. But I, I guess if this already passed through the city and we have this, then the ask is to have you go forward and hire a consultant? Is that the goal?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the motion requested is to authorize the mayor to execute the grant contract. Hiring a consultant, there are still a couple of steps ahead for that.
All right. Uh, Councilman Burns, I thought, do you have a question?
I think you might have talked himself through that, but, uh, let's say we didn't accept the half million dollars in grant money, did decide to, to do a protest and say, "We're not going to do it." Eventually, the state forces us to do it. Who's going to pay that half million plus dollars? Is that going to come from our taxpayers in the city directly?
Yep, it comes from us.
That's what I was suspecting. Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions or comments?
I've got one. I'm, I'm getting a little confused, but listening to Nick, it sounds like we're not required to do this. Listen to Hiller, it sounds like we're required to do this. Is this a requirement that we must do or is this optional?
No, this is a requirement for the city of Cedro Woolley to, uh, do this work.
Thank you.
All right. No other questions or comments? I am looking for a motion to authorize Mayor Johnson to execute, sign the grant contract with the Washington State Department of Commerce for funding the climate element for the 2024 comprehensive plan.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Thank you.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Cox, seconded by Councilman Burns. For motion stated, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Motion carries. All right. Good questions. Thank you. Moving on to, um, item number three. Thank you, Hiller. Moving on to item number three, adopting the updated salary grid, uh, the community development director position. And Charlie, I believe that is you.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Uh, yeah, this is an item where we're looking to move the community development director position within the grid. Uh, it's currently in the grid at grade 131 and we're looking to move it to 132. Uh, in the summary there, I provided some of the background. Uh, we've had this position vacant since May 2023. Um, we've made three attempts to recruit for the position and we did have one applicant here in front of the council for confirmation at one point. That didn't work out. Uh, we've interviewed some other candidates, but on our last go-around, we, we didn't have anybody that really qualified to interview. Uh, we've been involving the council, Planning and Business Development Committee in these interviews. But in our recent discussions with the recruiter who's been helping us out, we, um, you know, we, we are running into some roadblocks. It may just be a factor of timing and, you know, we're certainly, we need to fill this position. So we're certainly planning to go out again. Um, we appreciate all of Hiller's work, but he is part-time and we really need somebody full-time and, and, and fully here in the office as much as we can, can get. So, um, we're committed to this and, uh, the recruiter's recommendation was to explore if we could potentially increase the salary. So by moving it from grade 131 to 132, we would do that. We didn't make it into the packet with this and my apologies for that, but we did look at this. We compared the position using the comparable cities that we use for AFSMI as well. And when we looked at where it was in grade 131 and the other cities, uh, the minimum salary was two and a half percent above the average of the other cities. The maximum salary was 1.7% below. That's at 131. So our recommendation is to move it to 132. The minimum goes to 7.6% above, the maximum to 3.2% above. Uh, we think that'll be a bit more competitive. That may just be enough of a margin to get us some additional applicants. And that's the recommendation. And then you have the, the revised grid included in there as well. You took a previous action tonight, at least if you look at the one that includes AFSMI on the collections specialist too. So you'll see that in there and on the vehicle technical mechanic and the lead mechanic. So they're all highlighted in green. We just did one, one combined version, but then there's also a separate non-represented version with just the director of community development going from 131 to 132. What that essentially means is, uh, if you, if you look at the grid, uh, it's a basically a difference between steps per year of, of around $5,000 to $6,000 each step. We have nine steps in our grid. We are able to hire anywhere in that grid. Um, just depends on the qualifications, the applicant that we receive. But that, they would progress through that grid, um, each step, uh, one step per year. So that's the request this evening and we would like to keep it moving if possible, if the council is so inclined to take action this evening.
So you're looking for an action tonight?
Ideally, yes, so we can get the app, get it back out on the market.
All right. Any questions? Yes, go ahead.
I just have a question regarding the, their title. I know that we had changed it way back, but can you explain that title and if that plays any role in the change in that, why people might not be looking at it or?
Yeah, the title, uh, was recommended by our classification and, classification and compensation consultant from two years ago. And it's a more common title than the title that we had previously, uh, according to him. And it's a better descriptor of what the position actually does. So a lot of planning directors, particularly in bigger cities, they do only planning. But our, our position does both planning and building. Uh, so that is the reasoning behind the title change. The council could change the title if you were so inclined, if you had heartburn over it, or we can talk that through with you. But, uh, that's why it was recommended for a change at that time and when the council approved that, that, uh, particular study, that was a part of it in adopting the grid.
If I may, I'm wondering if it's possible in looking at this, um, salary grid, if we find somebody local or about that has skills here or there, would we be able to provide like a compensation for partial education along with hours in their 40-hour work week? Maybe do 30-hour work weeks for a year while doing some schooling to move into that position if they're qualified? Or something like that. It seems like achieving our goal of finding a master planner in a way, it, it is a tall ask and we've reached everywhere from Florida through California, all the way to the East Coast and, and we've interviewed a lot of people and it just feels like Cedro Woolley may have some local talent that, that just doesn't realize that they're, they have that skillset or that that it's available or that they'll have the time to grow into it.
The way our salary system is set up right now, you know, we would have to have that person be less than full-time, I think to, in order to, to really qualify in here and they would still be underqualified for the role. So we would have a challenge with that. Um, we, we, you know, ultimately would want them to get to that level. I think the big, the big, big challenge we have right now is we have the comp plan right in front of us. And this is the biggest piece of work that a planning director or community development director does every 10 years in Washington. So it is critical work because whatever ends up in there, we're all going to be living with it for a long time. It'll get tweaked on the margin. There'll be amendments each year, but they're usually not overhauls. So it's a pretty critical time. Uh, recognize we may not be able to find that person we're looking for, but I would recommend we stay the course on that.
I think it'd be a good opportunity for whoever, because if we have a consultant do the majority of the grunt work, obviously we have to do research and look into it to make sure it's correct and what, what we're looking for and steer that. But the consultant's going to do most of the work in understanding the RCWs, understanding what the state requirements are, understanding where our growth is and then working within our city to, to navigate that whoever's planning to, to navigate, okay, this is what works for our community within that growth structure of what's required. So I think the consultant's going to handle a lot of what you're talking about, your biggest challenges are, and we have a grant for that consultant. So I think that's a relief, in my opinion. Um, but I do still see the need. Thank you.
Councilman Cox, your light is on.
Uh, Charlie?
No, I'm sorry.
Councilman Al, uh, Henderson?
Yep. Um, so I see for the director position, uh, so that's been moved up to a grade 132. So in this step program, what step would we be starting that employee on if we were to hire them? Or is that just dependent on experience?
Uh, it's the latter. And yeah, the proposal is to move it up to 132 from where it is currently at 131. Uh, if the council did not take action on this or decided this, they did not want to do this, then it would stay at 131.
Okay. And does that take, does that take into account, um, I remember several months ago for the, uh, for the non-represented employees, I think we started everybody, um, it was, uh, step four was the new step one. And that's, so those numbers are taking this into account. So step one of, uh, of grade 132 would be essentially the old step four?
That's correct.
Or vice versa? Okay. And so this would put our, um, okay. I'm seeing on this list, this would put several of, uh, or at least a couple of the different, uh, directors on, uh, different pay scales. So they're not all uniform. Right? Like we got, we got 133, 132, 131. Um, and, uh, so, uh, the community development director, right? the Community Development Director right now is a 131 in par with Finance Director, if I'm reading this right.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Burns?
So I wanted to verify I understood correctly, Charlie. We're just not getting interest at the current price point. And you think this is going to make us competitive enough that somebody's going to consider it?
Yeah, this is a recommendation from our recruiter who's been helping us. And in looking at the market, you know, intuitively, when you're not getting applicants, you know, you wonder what's the reason? And there could be a lot of reasons. But looking at the market data, it indicated we were just a little bit low, especially on the high end. So do you think this will help? No guarantees. Our recruiter, literally a quote, said, "These are the hardest positions to recruit right now, period." Planning Director, Community Development Director positions. So that's what we're up against. But I think this is a time to pull out all the stops and do what we can to get somebody good.
I definitely have serious concerns about handing the keys to somebody who's not experienced and ready for this job. Preferably having someone who's done it before in the state of Washington, considering how close we are to the comp plan. It's kind of a little late to learn as you go. And handing it off to a consultant, I know we put a lot of that on the consultants, and that's what these firms do, but they're also loaded with many other clients at this point, I'm sure. So I have a lot of concerns with doing it that way. Looking at the numbers on this, it seems like really we're just starting off at a higher level with 131. If you were starting at the end of the 131 scale, you're still almost halfway through 132. So this is not a huge change you're asking for. So I'm open to doing this. I think that we are leaving ourselves open to problems the longer we have this position open. I see the need to make sure we get someone good in the role, obviously, but I don't want to see it continue to sit empty. So thank you for being diligent.
Thank you. Thank you for your words. Anyone else? So if there are no other comments, is there a motion to move forward?
I just had a couple more questions, if I could.
Go ahead.
Mayor Johnson? Thank you. Charlie, so council just approved two separate comp plan grant approvals, one for $125,000 and one for $500,000. Now, it appears to me, and the way it was explained, was those are for city reimbursement costs for development of the comp plan. Would a increase in, in a, oh, my screen just went blank. In the grade and step program to raise the Community Development Director to a 132, would that be something that those monies could be used for? As a reimbursement, because we are trying to hire somebody at a little bit higher of a grade to essentially order back most of this comp plan for us, minus the help from our consultants?
Yeah, I don't think directly the way you're describing it is a way that we could use the grant funds. But if we did hire the person on at grade 132, and if Heller is able to get an answer from the state that says that we can charge some staff time to those grants, and if we have capacity within those grants, then we could handle some of the additional cost, at least in the first year, year and a half, by doing that. But they would be, this position would be in grade 132, you know. It's a long-term commitment essentially that we're looking at here. So it's, you know, that would only help for a year if it helped at all.
Right, I understand it'd be essentially in perpetuity. But, I mean, we're looking at receiving $625,000. And I heard the word reimbursement being thrown around a lot. And if we're, if we're looking to get better talent brought in to the city by way of bumping that grade up to a 132, I mean, I see a good use, at least partially, of those funds to, you know, keep that as a relief to the taxpayers in a certain amount. If we can get an answer on that, and how that, we can spend the money that way, it'd be really nice to know before we voted on it.
Yeah, we don't have that answer this evening. We may have it by the next meeting, I'm not sure.
Okay. Well, something to think about anyways, I guess.
Madam Mayor, may I ask one more thing? If we have $625,000 plus the public works that Mr. West described that are separate grants, correct? I'm imagining that's going to get close to a million dollars. And we have to have an expert in comp plans still yet to develop that. With a million dollars, how does that work out? Like, what are we spending that million dollars on if we have an expert we're reaching out to hire on to get that in here to write the comp plan? Isn't they, they're just going to reach out to consultants too, utilizing that money that we're grabbing for that? So it seems like there's a big honus on this comp plan and this Community Development Director, leaving out the fact that there's a million dollars that if it doesn't go to staff, then it goes to consultants. It's not going to go to other means. We're not going to tangibly go out there and do something with that money. It's for developing that, that program. So that person, if it can't go to staffing, and if it even can go to only partial wages towards that staffing, whoever we hire is going to be spending that million dollars on developing that with consultants. So I just want to let people know that that honus for this, you know, consultant and then having somebody who's an expert, they don't coalesce with the amount of money we're getting for the grant to develop that, I take.
I've got one real quick. I think you've got to separate the Director of Community Development and the grants. They're separate subjects. And basically, we got to decide whether we want to add money to the Director of Community Development. The grants have nothing to do with it. It's, it's two separate subjects, and they don't affect each other. Maybe that much for a new director, but they're separate subjects. So I think we're confusing things by putting them together.
Thank you, Councilman Loy. The only reason why I'm looking them together is because we're saying it's a huge portion, the Comprehensive Plan. But if it's a small portion for what that community developer's going to be doing, then like I said, do we need an expert in comp plans when we're reaching out for talent? Or can we get somebody that maybe is going to utilize and grow with those consultants that a million dollars would afford? So that's why the, because those grants are for the community developer to hire consultants to develop the comp plan, and that's why they're tacked together.
It's because of the level of work that needs to be done to the comp plan. It's much more complicated than it has been in the past. And the legislature added other, other aspects to the comp plan that now all cities in the state of Washington have to look at. So, and the state understood that, which is why they offered the grant money, because they were asking for a lot in a short period of time. And I got a tickle in my throat.
You know, another thing, the comp plan's an ongoing thing. It's going to be here long after we're gone. And you get somebody that's not up to snuff, and they put some strange things in your comp plan? You got to live with that, and it can, it's just amazing how that expensive that can be when, when a director puts in stuff that shouldn't be there.
Yeah, I agree with that, Mr., or Councilman Loy. Bringing somebody in from Florida or California on the fly, and then having them develop our comp plan is better than a consultant, I guess, but I don't think so. They're not going to have the Cedar Woolley mindset. They're not going to necessarily have our city interest in best interest, in best play. They're going to have their experience in working in some of these big cities, and then being told, you have to get this done immediately, right? And if we have a million dollars towards consultants, then we can actually manage that a little bit better and not have somebody with that outside experience telling us this is the only way it can go forward. So I mean, it is a big decision. I definitely appreciate what you're saying.
Well, you got to be real careful when you hire somebody like that, because you have these steppers, and they would love to get here in Cedar Woolley. And a year later, they're down the road with a lot bigger off, you know. So you got, whoever's doing the hiring has to be up to snuff, because that's a big deal.
I just want to say quickly, for my time on the Planning Commission, that job is only getting more complex. And as Cedar Woolley grows and there's more regulations, I, unfortunately, sometimes you have to pay for talent. But I do agree with you. We want somebody who will have Cedar Woolley's best interests at heart and won't leave in a year. So I think you have to, you know, it's a bit of a crapshoot, but I think you have to pay to do that in order to at least get some decent candidates.
I just want to add one more. I talked to Charlie about this, and I told him, you got to find somebody that has, that understands Cedar Woolley, somebody that understands small communities. You know, the worst thing I would think we could get is a guy coming in from Seattle that's lived in Seattle his whole life. We've got to find somebody that understands our community, or communities like it.
On that note, I do want to thank you, Mr. West, and the whole Planning Department for everything you guys have done in stepping up. It's been a while, actually, when you think about it, since we, since John Coleman left. And our cities run smooth, in my opinion, and we keep the wheels going. So you guys have done an excellent job, and I really want to thank you, and I do appreciate that. Nicole, please pass that down to your, to your department.
Hi, Will. You're very welcome.
You know, I think that you've all highlighted good reasons for why we probably should do this, because the people in our area, the people in Washington who are looking for a job, already saw this and didn't apply for it. So we might just need to put more skin in the game here so that we get someone that you're, we are wanting. Someone who is from a rural area in Washington, but has the experience to actually do a good job. Otherwise, we might not end up with someone who has the values or the knowledge to do this.
So does the council want to move forward with this? Is somebody wanting to make a motion, or what is the council's pleasure here?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to increase that from the 131 to the 132. And maybe we even entice local talent to come in and apply, people that we wouldn't otherwise have expected. So that would be great.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Loy, to approve the updated salary grid, moving the Community Development position from grade 131 to 132. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Okay, thank you. Moving on to the grant application for Olmsted Park Playground and Sports Courts. I see Nathan is on the name on the list here, but I'm sure Mark you're going to cover for us. I don't see Nathan here.
Nathan is here.
Is he online? Are you here, Nathan?
Yes, he is.
I'm on Zoom today.
Perfect. Hello, welcome.
So good evening, Mayor, Council. So the issue at hand tonight, and this is just a first read for your consideration, is should the City Council approve Resolution Number 1138-24, authorizing the staff to submit a grant application for funding through the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office for the Olmsted Park Playground and Sports Courts project? And so if Council hopefully is aware, we're in the process of finalizing all of our permitting and construction documents for the Olmsted Park Phase 1. And if you can refer to Page 151 of your packet. So Phase 1 of the project includes the site grading, utilities, restrooms, signage, the parking lot, and the caretaker's residence. And we hope to get working on that part of the project sometime over the next couple of months. And what we do not have funding for is the area to the east of the parking lot. You can see there is volleyball courts and the basketball court area and the playground. Those are the elements that are the basis of this new RCO grant application. And grant applications are due on May 1st. And if we're lucky enough to be awarded a grant, the money for this next phase will become available in the spring of 2026. So our cost estimate for that next phase is $650,000, and the grant would cover 50% of the total project costs. And so the city's match would be about $325,000. And we propose that that money would come from the Park Impact Fee Fund. In order for us to move forward with this application, the RCO requires that the City Council approve this resolution on behalf that authorizes the staff to apply for grant funding on the city's behalf. And now, once again, it's just a first read. We, I'll bring it back to Council again on March 13th. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
Yeah.
Are there any questions for?
I got one.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Councilman Henderson.
Okay, so, so the match is coming out of the Park Impact Fees, of which we have a balance sufficient enough to cover?
Yeah, Mark did an analysis of that. And so this month, we wouldn't need this money until, for another two years, and we've already got a pretty healthy fund balance in there. And we're projecting, you know, another couple of hundred thousand to come in over the next two-year period. Mark can probably speak more to that.
Okay, so do, and what did you say the due date was to submit the application? May 15th, right?
Applications are due on May 1st.
May 1st. So essentially, the ask here is to apply for the grant to see if we even get it?
Yeah, so, and it's a, it's a kind of a three-part process. So all this is, is just an authorizing, it's just, we need an authorization to actually apply for the money. And if we're lucky enough to get selected, then we have to submit another thing called a certification of match, basically, you know, proving that we have the money to actually continue. And then the final phase is an actual grant agreement. So this is just kind of the first phase of a multi-phase process that we have to look through.
Thank you, Nate.
Go ahead, Councilman Lavaca.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So just like Councilman Allen had stated, we would, we're still going forward with the program. This is basically application to save us $325,000 on the, on the overall park. And the designs are pretty well finalized. They, they look good. So I guess my question is a little bit outside this part right here. Is there plans for like pickleball courts or things at future parks? I noticed that this one has volleyball, and it has basketball, and that's pretty well set there. And we do kind of have some of those, but is there plans for pickleball elsewhere? Or is that something that can be incorporated, or?
Yeah, so I know the Rotary Club is, there's a, they've got funding, excuse me, funding set aside to research that. And they've also got a donor to cover a big chunk of that cost. And they've looked at different sites around the city for that. And I think they've kind of gone back to Janiki Field, which is school this big property, as a potential site for that. But I don't know, the mayor might, the mayor's a Rotarian, she might know more about that than I do.
Yeah, I, yeah, I actually can give an update on that. So I did have a meeting with both representatives of Rotary and also with the Cedar Woolley School District. And we, the three of us are talking about the possibility of actually putting it on school property, but it'll be at the high school. So that is the plan. When I met with them, we decided that we were going to go ahead and look for grants and do some planning regarding that to move forward. It'll be a slow process, but we're planning on doing that. And it'll be pickleball slash tennis courts, so it'll be dual, so more usable. And it will also bring in competition into the high school. Right now, our tennis courts are so rough. They are in disrepair that you can't do tournaments there. They actually do them over at the college. So that's what we're planning on doing. So I did ask that Charlie work with the school district as far as putting together a grant and researching all of that. So, yeah, the plans are in the works. I don't know how quickly it'll come, but that's what we're hoping to do.
Maybe it'll spur more for other areas, because I know if it's at the high school, people can't do it during the day, obviously. There's certain areas the public will actually be able to do it. Seems like the school funding would cover a little bit of the high school stuff. And you mentioned Janiki Playfields, that might be a great spot outdoors or. I know that we were planning one here at the park, but yeah, it's a big spot. Anyways, take you off topic there. I was just wondering if we were planning that at Olmsted, because it is getting, it's getting big, and it'd just be another activity our city has to offer. Thank you.
Yeah, and actually, Nathan can speak to that, because we did look at the possibility of doing pickleball courts out, or up at Olmsted. But there wouldn't be room for both the playfield for the younger kids and then also the pickleball courts. And we did also look over at Janiki Field. The problem there is that the school district's going to need a new school built, and their, the location that they're looking at is the same place where the pickleball courts would be. So, and I think that property's, that property's already been designated for a future school. So that's the, that was the dilemma and all of that, so.
Our schools always go near a highway for some reason. That's a worse location for us. a school on nine, on 20, the roundabout to get back to.
You're absolutely right. Yeah, you're right about that.
So anyway, this is a first read. If anybody has any more questions or comments for Nathan, we can bring it back, not unless you want to move forward with it now, but it is a first read.
I just want to say there's been great work on this project and there's a lot of excitement with the people who know it in my ward. So this is going to be a nice addition for the city. So and I also appreciate the coordinating work with Northern State and the Trails. And there was another newspaper story about a big pieces of steel brought in for a new bridge. So there's a lot of really good work and I think it's going to benefit our citizens.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I feel comfortable moving this along and making a motion to do so. They've done a really good job.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilwoman Kesty and seconded by Councilman Cock. Any more discussion or questions? Then all those in favor signify by. Yes, Councilman Henderson?
Oh, I was just going to chime in. Sorry, I was muted earlier, but I was just going to ask what the benefit of waiting to see if we're going to get this back or not would be. So I Councilwoman Kesty kind of beat me to the punch there, but so that's all I had to say.
Okay, thank you. So a motion by Kesty and Cock. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And.
Aye.
Thank you. And opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion carries. All right, moving on to the amendment to Title 13 Stormwater. 10 minutes to eight. We're coming up on the 8 o'clock hour. If it's okay with Council, if we push through the agenda to complete it, if there's anybody opposed to that, do you want to speak to that? Okay, so we're moving on then to item five and we have two more items after that. So amendment to Title 13 Stormwater for the Seedra Woolly Municipal Code. This is ordinance 206824. Again, it's a first read. This was put together by David Lee. I didn't see him online, so I'm assuming Mark, you're going to cut.
I'll take that for him.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
So David's been working on this for about a year and a half now. The Department of Ecology, the manager of the stormwater permit that we work our both our wastewater and stormwater utilities under, has required us to update the code provisions of this, mostly related to low-impact development type standards and things like that. We originally developed sections, chapters 1336 and 1340, right after I got here to Seedra Woolly, actually. We had not much of a code before that. We used Pat Hayden's services to do that. And they were kind of a quick and dirty attempt to pass that. And there's been a lot of refinement since then, and this is kind of the latest in those refinements. I would imagine we'll see others, but this does get us up into the realm of having a code that fully meets the requirements of our permit. And so I won't attempt to speak about particular details other than that, but it's mostly housekeeping and correcting some things that were redundant. And and this is just a first read tonight. And if you have any questions about it, I'd be glad to look at it even more closely for you, but that's the long and short of it for the interest of time.
Does anybody have any questions? Any questions? Councilman Cock?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Oh, okay.
Madam Mayor, on the first read, if it's all right, I'd like to make a motion to table until next session. If we, since you already made.
Yeah, there was already a motion that was made. Is there a?
If we vote no on the motion for right now, we can revisit this at the next one. Are we voting it off the table or not? Because it'd be nice to do a little bit more research into it. Just general housekeeping, like you said, but.
Well, that depends upon if Councilman Cock wants to pull his motion or not.
I can pull the motion if you need to, if you feel we need more time. It's okay with me.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, both of you. Yep. And then moving on to item number six, which is to amend chapter 17.24 of the Seedra Woolly Municipal Code, minimum commercial retail floor area in the CBC CBD, ordinance 206724. And this is also a first read. Thank you for coming forward.
Good evening, everybody. Okay, so currently the zoning regulations for the central business district, they allow for multifamily housing above the first floor or at the rear of commercial occupancy. When those regulations were put into place, there was never a minimum commercial floor area requirement established specifying just how much of that first floor space needs to be commercial. So what we're seeing at the building and planning department is people are requesting remodel applications to add more and more residential space and shrinking those commercial spaces, not something we want for our primarily commercial downtown district. So staff in the planning commission found that it is important to preserve the commercial spaces in the CBD, given that that is the primary intent is commercial and retail use. We want to prevent that deviation from that use and ensure we have a good balance between residential and commercial spaces. So to remedy that issue, we recommended these amendments to chapter 1724 that would establish a requirement that a minimum of 50% of the first floor area facing primary street frontage does need to be designated as commercial or retail use. We also went ahead and clarified that private garage space does not count toward commercial retail use. It's not a good use of viable commercial space. And then we put parameters on the size and location of main entrances to residential lobby areas. So that's an effort to prevent those lobby areas also from overtaking that viable commercial space. So specifically, the main entrances to the residential units of a mixed-use building need to be located at the rear of the building. And if rear access is not feasible, then they can locate that main entrance into a maximum of 10% of the commercial retail floor area facing the primary street frontage. And that's at the planning director's discretion. So leaves a little bit of flexibility there for those cases where you have a maybe smaller smaller structure you're working with. So and maybe rear access isn't something you can do. So the amendments to chapter 1724, as recommended by Planning Commission, were included in that draft ordinance 206724 in your packet. As this is a first read, I'm not asking for any action tonight. I'm so pleased, but yeah, I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
So any questions for Nicole?
Just if you don't mind.
What was the justification for 50%? Why not 100% of business down below?
So commercial.
Sorry, outside of the general lobby and entrance up.
Yeah. Well, the issue there is then you end up with a lot of non-conforming uses in the central district. So it's we want it to be kind of a more gradual change. So 50% generally, there are maybe three or four remodels that have been done that would exceed that. But yeah, just something to kind of try to work it with what we have already in the downtown and not exacerbate any issues with nonconformance.
I guess my concern would be possible remodels of taking business space that now currently exists and minimizing that and creating residential off to the side or in the back where it didn't exist before.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow. Can you repeat?
I guess my concern was having having commercial space down below remodeled and turned into residential, reducing the space that they have or currently in use, making that a residential and going the opposite direction.
I see what you're saying. Okay. Yeah, I guess this wouldn't prevent that from happening as long as it doesn't go under the 50% requirement.
Councilman Lavaca?
I just want to say that, you know, there's a lot of communities that have that apartment living or whatnot up top and then down below is the restaurants and the trinket shops and stuff like that. And I've actually lived in some of those apartments, you know, in various communities like poor towns or whatnot. And it is kind of cool to see the hustle and bustle of the street from your from your apartment window and then run down there and work all day in the kitchen and then, you know, head up back up with your friends and whatnot. It's, I don't know, it can be fun. So I do see where having that does can be fun. Our community is a little bit more quieter, for sure. So yeah, it's I can see that, too.
Counselor?
One more question. Is there a lot of areas around our community that have that? Like I could see a couple of buildings that have top stores that I can't imagine are going to be inventory or product and whatnot. I see some that look like there could be some housing up there, but it doesn't look like it's a height.
Mainly along Metcalf Street is where you'll see those. I'll be honest, though, I don't I don't have a way of going in to check who's living in there. So, you know, it could be nothing. So I don't know.
Yeah, I guess if it's space. So thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Kesty?
And of course, mine is regarding parking.
Yeah.
So because it's being considered remodeling, they don't have to adhere to the new parking standards?
Correct. Parking only applies, new parking requirements only apply for new construction.
And there's no way to, I mean, they're modifying that space to be a living quarter. There's no way to make any room for parking or anything?
Unless we did a code amendment to allow for that, I suppose that's something we could look into. I know the current parking standards for the CBD do incorporate reduced residential parking. And I think that was with the intent of kind of trying to make it more of a community feel like Mr. Lavaca was saying. It's like, you know, having that mixed-use, commercial, vibrant downtown with people walking the streets, going up and you can see out your window, hey, what's going on down below, kind of trying to bring people in a little bit more to occupy that. So that was well before my time, though, so I don't I can't really speak too much into that.
Anyone else? All right. Well, thank you.
Of course.
I guess I should have asked, did the council want to move forward with this or you want to have this come back?
I actually would like to see more commercial space.
Say again. Just want Mr. Henderson.
I actually would like to see more commercial space and less residential in the downtown district. We're we're going more into residential residential and we don't have the businesses and the tax revenue coming in to support all of it. And as much as we want to sit up here and say, hey, we're great, we're growing, we're doing, going out to levees all the time and putting that burden on the taxpayers isn't proving us to be healthy in that way, in my opinion, as we grow. So yes, we're providing some people with some places to lay their heads, but at the end of the day, we're still not providing them with places to work. We're enticing people to come in and spend their excess tax dollars so that we can provide the basic services to our community. And so my push would be more on economic development and places for that rather than residential, especially in the downtown business district. But that's my opinion.
Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, just to kind of add on that, seems like this this proposal is just kind of a one-size-fits-all that doesn't really fit our small-town charm and feel with adding a lot of residential units or the potential for residential units to our central business district. So, you know, keeping that in mind moving forward. I know this is a first read, but let's not lose who we are in the process of changing ordinances. That'd be my guidance.
Yes, Councilman Burns?
Just for clarity, we'd be considering restricting something that has been open to the public to do whatever they wanted for the past 100-plus years. Is that correct?
Essentially, yes. It's kind of a imply implication, right? It should be commercial first floor, but there's no actual, this is the requirement, right? So.
Realistically, from your knowledge, if we went out and looked at the businesses in their current state that are in the central business district, do you think that 50%, 70%, 80%? At what point are we meeting what they're roughly at now?
I would say a good 90% do meet the commercial space intent. So it's, as I saw applications come in, it was just kind of a red flag in my head. There's nothing really preventing more and more people from catching on to this idea. And I know we've had issues with commercial space being vacant, so I wanted to press on this a little quickly.
Sorry, let me rephrase my question. Not percentage of buildings, but percentage of use in those buildings.
Use in the buildings.
Yeah, I know that's tougher to gauge.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd probably be closer to 80% then.
Okay.
All right. All right, thank you. We'll see you at the next council meeting. Or maybe I guess two council meetings from now. All right, last item of the night, and I thank Council for sticking with it and making this all happen. It happens to be the ratification and confirmation, Public Works Emergency Declaration for the Emergency Wastewater Treatment Plant System. And Mr. Freiber?
Thank you, Mayor. This is pretty short and simple. We had a issue with our matching some of our new fiber cable that runs the SCADA system at the plant operations building. Basically, there's two different styles. I didn't know this before this occurred, but they can either be slanted and joined that way. These are fiber optic cables, or they can be cut blunt and joined that way. But we had cables of both size kinds trying to tie together. They worked for close to a year, but they were not stable. And Kevin was the brunt of that on the weekend of February 10th, when one of those cables decided to fail, causing the entire SCADA system to go down. He ended up spending most of the next 36 hours at the plant watching that. He was able to pound on the junction box and get it working, but he had to do it several times. And we don't like to run our system like that. And so we declared an emergency. We got an expert out to diagnose the problem. They did that and they came back in last week and actually fixed it for less than $1,000. So it's done and that's the story behind it. I do need to make one correction, though. I mentioned in the under the background in the second paragraph, the name CCOM Corporation of Mount Lake Terrace, due to a miscommunication between Kevin and Julie. He told her to look it up. It's CCOM. She did. This is what came up. There's actually another CCOM. CCOM Cabling Incorporated was the correct name and they're of Everett, Washington instead. So I would submit that one Scribner correction to the memo, but other than that, it's correct. So just looking for your ratification of my declaration on this by motion and that's our request.
Are there any questions or are you ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I was just going to say, great job on handling it gorilla style, right? I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, by, okay, Councilman Cock, seconded by Councilman Lavaca. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And you'll have to give our thanks to both Kevin and Julie for making this all happen. All right. So I want to point out to the council, the January 24th City Council Strategic Planning Committee meeting minutes, those are in your packet if you haven't seen them already. And that our next meeting is going to be the council study session, March 6th, which is actually next week, believe it or not. We are into March next week. So with that, if there is nothing else with the good of the order, we are adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.